All right, it is seven o'clock. I will call the media order. We will start with roll call. Janet, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Trupiano?
Here.
Councilmember Tillman?
Here.
Councilmember Clovin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Wong?
Here. Okay, with that, we will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start with a public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anyone in the room who would like to make a comment on anything that's not on the agenda now is the time. Seeing none, Janet, if we have audio only, do we also have the Zoom hand raising function or no?
I believe we do, and at this time, we do not have any hands raised on this item.
Excellent. I will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull? If not, I will open the item up for public comment. Again, anyone in the audience who would like to comment on the consent? And then Janet?
Mayor Wong, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
All right, I will close public comment and look for a motion for the consent calendar.
Move approval.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Janet, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Trupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Wong?
Aye. All right, with that, we move to item five, recognitions. This is an informational item only as a recognition of African-American History Month, that'd be in February. I think we did our annual cycle of events that we recognize, and this is one of them. So that is, we're just recognizing that this month, or this meeting, sorry. And then on to reports from city manager and staff. I would like to preface this by saying to welcoming Mr. Ron Renal as our, for his first meeting. He was appointed last meeting as our interim city manager, so welcome. And if you have any comments or reports now, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I just want to let you all know that the city manager recruitment closed on Sunday, this last Sunday, the 5th. There were 18 applicants, and so the recruiter said that we have some good candidates. The next steps will be to meet, recruiter will be meeting with the city council in closed session in the upcoming week or so hopefully. We'll try to get a date with you all, have a special meeting, I think, so we don't have to wait till the next city council meeting. And then you'll be able to choose the list of applicants that you would like to interview. So that is going well. So I may be short-lived here if that goes successfully, which would be wonderful. Not that I don't want to be here, but it would be wonderful for Clayton to have a permanent city manager. The finance director, Angeline Loffler, will be starting on Monday. That's another exciting thing. Nataish is still going to be helping us out in the interim and the transition, but we're super excited about getting a permanent finance director back on board again. So that's happening. And then the final thing I want to mention is today, the Board of Supervisors rescinded their emergency COVID-19 declaration effective February the 28th. That's to coincide with Governor Newsom's statement back in October of '22 that he was going to be rescinding the emergency declaration for the state. And so we will be bringing something to the Clayton City Council at the next meeting to rescind, is that correct? I'm sorry. Clayton City Council at the next meeting to rescind Clayton's emergency declaration. And that concludes my comments for the city council tonight.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Next is item seven, public hearings. We have none. And so we move on to action items. Eight A is a presentation of the audited annual financial report. Nataish, would you like to kick us off?
I will have the interim city manager kick it off, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor and city council members, we are going to be presenting to you the audit that has been completed for fiscal year 2022, which ended June 30th of last year. Our auditing firm with Cropper and, I'm sorry. Yes, the Cropper Row CPAs. Bryce Rojas will be making a brief presentation to you via PowerPoint. The Audit and Budget Commission Committee met on this on January the 23rd, received the report, made some recommendations, and had some questions which have been included in this presentation tonight for the council's consideration. And then our request for you is that you will receive this report. So with that, I'd like to ask Bryce Rojas if he could come up and make his presentation. And then when Bryce is done with his presentation, Finance Director Sharma and Bryce will be able to answer any questions, as well as myself, to the extent I can. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Bryce Rojas, as I was introduced, and I've been the audit partner, this might be my third year on the audit. Can't recall. Time flies, especially when you're having fun auditing. So I just wanted to, I'm going to have a brief presentation. Hopefully, it's pretty brief. But if I skip over anything, or if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me at the end. So we perform the audit every year, and we were able to issue a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, saying that in all material respects, we believe the financial statements to be fairly presented. And the city, the city's net position increased to about 45.76 at June 30th, 2022. Forty-five point seven-six million, not dollars, just regular. And the unrestricted portion of that was 5.74 million dollars. The general fund, which is a portion of the city, the general fund's revenues were just under 5 million at 4.898 million, with 6.246 in expenditures. That in itself resulted in a $1.348 million decrease of revenues over expenditures. But during the year, the city received grant funding, particularly from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, and 1.598 million dollars in grants were transferred over to the general fund. So after revenues, expenditures, transfers in of money, the general fund increased its fund balance by $250,000. And the city as a whole increased its net position by about $338,000. As part of our audit, we, it's impossible for us to perform the audit without looking at the controls or what's going on with the controls at the city. And as is known, the city's gone through a lot of turnover in the finance department, and that led to some inefficiencies and other weaknesses. And we call that continuity of personnel weakness. We also identified a fair value estimate difference that was material. And we also noted a material weakness in the agency funds that the city controls or is steward over. And we also noticed that the city could improve its document retention in including the supporting evidence for journal entries with the journal entries that they make. And moving on to the financial highlights, as was noted, the net position of the city was 45.76 million dollars. And out of that 30 million of it was net investment in capital assets. 9.89 million was restricted for special programs and projects, leaving an unrestricted net position balance of 5.74 million dollars. And the general fund balance was 6.4 million dollars. With the non-spendable portion of that was 173,000. Funds committed for special projects was 495,000, leaving an unassigned fund balance of 5.74 million. And then on to the next slide. The next slide shows the government-wide, the city as a whole, all the revenues coming in, comparing it year to year. And the big year-to-year change was in operating grants and contributions. It increased about 1.86 million dollars. And so total revenues for the city were 9.359 million dollars. And as has been mentioned, the ARPA grants, the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, or grants, was 1.4 million dollars. And the city received other grants of about 1.28 million dollars. And then we have a slide that's not being presented, but that shows the city revenues as a pie chart. And the large portion of that can be seen is operating grant contributions. And then the next largest would be charges for services. Well, property taxes, sorry. Property taxes is largest than operating grants and contributions. And then the next slide, it shows government-wide expenses, the city expenses as a whole, comparing it to 2021. And the city increased its expenses by $313,000. 2.69 of that was for general government, 2.7 was for public safety, 2.5 was for public works, 729,000 was for Parks and Recreation, and community development had 356,000 dollars. And then Dever Hall had about $61,000 in expenses during the year. And then the next slide also shows the expenses as a pie chart. And then the next slide shows general fund revenues, just the general fund portion of the city. And those increased about 1.5 million dollars. And as was mentioned, that's largely due to the ARPA funds coming in, the ARPA grant. The city received 2.8 million dollars in property taxes. Sales and use taxes was 564,000. Franchise fees was 588,000. Service charges were 305,000, and other revenues were 593,000. For a total of 6.5 million dollars in general fund revenues. And then the next slide also shows the pie chart of general fund revenues and how it's composed, majority of it being property taxes. And on the following slide, we have a breakout, no, sorry. We have general fund expenditures, 6.2 million dollars. Majority of that was 2.57 for general government. Public safety was 2.68. And then public works was 330,000. Community development was 299,000. And Parks and Recreation was 336,000, with capital outlay being 22,000. So that's an increase of 1.579 over the prior year, prior year, excuse me. The next slide shows a pie chart of the general fund expenses. And then the following slide shows a breakout of the general fund expenditures between, there's the general fund, there's the rainy day fund, which has been set up by the council, and a pandemic recovery reserve fund. All three of those combined make up the general fund as presented in the financial statements. General fund itself was 5.1 million dollars of total expenditures. The rainy day fund contributed 26,000 dollars. And then the pandemic recovery reserve added another 1 million dollars. And that's the ARPA funds, for the total of 6.246 million dollars. And then just additional notes, the pension, net pension liability for the city was just under 2.8 million dollars, with deferred outflows of 1.2 million and deferred inflows about 2.4 million. And related, the OPEB liability for the year was 578,000. And there were no related deferred inflows or outflows for the OPEB. And then this year, Government Accounting Standards Board implemented a new accounting standard for recognizing and capitalizing leases on the balance sheet. So the city had $250,000 right-of-use asset and related payable of $244,000. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those questions. Yes.
Did we have any questions from council? I had two, but on one of the earlier pages on the chart, it is the page that shows government-wide revenues.
Yes.
Things are kind of overshadowed by ARPA, but if we look down to other revenue, there's a precipitous decrease from 1.287 in the prior year to 542 in the current. Do we have background on what the largest drivers of that were? Maybe that's a question for our finance director. Yes.
I tried getting on my computer, gather some information, but I was having difficulties too, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, apologies. Our Wi-Fi is having some challenges.
I could look into that. I don't know if Nataish has an answer right now or.
For general fund, the other revenues, is that what you're referring to?
No, it's on the government-wide revenues page, so that would be page... I believe it would be six. Yeah, five or six, depending on how you page and eat.
And it's very hard to, because I downloaded it, and you have to go back and forth on slides. Why don't we maybe go to other questions, and I actually can pull it up to see what that decrease in the other revenues is? Some of this is, has to be a presentation, like.
Yeah, take a look and let's see. It's a decrease of 58%, so I was just curious.
Yeah.
And then my other question was similar in nature, I believe. Kind of marked, but. In the general fund, you see a decrease in other revenues as well. So I imagine that's probably a similar explanation in the same category, but isolated to the general fund. So if you could take a look at the decrease in other revenue for the enterprise, that would be useful. Other than that, did you want to comment on the material weaknesses that were identified? And then the city's response, I think that would be good to
Sure.
to discuss that a little bit?
Absolutely. So let me just say, when we, an audit is done, it's an audit is done on financial statements to ensure that the numbers are presented accurately and in a manner that conforms with the generally accepted accounting principles. Part of the audit also includes testing of internal controls to ensure that how auditors can assess risk in an entity. And part of the risk assessment is to go through the process to see the proper documentations attached, proper internal control procedures are in place, segregation of duties are in place, and then also ensuring that things are reported in a timely or in a manner that is reasonable with the generally accepted accounting principles. So city of Clayton, what I would say is that the operations, the day-to-day, is really by the books. If everything works well, the segregation of duties are in place. During this audit in 2122, that is in front of you today, the change in personnel and then also not having a succession plan, like a deep bench, or like at least somebody who can step in to ensure that the institutional knowledge is there to step in. Because what happens in this, as in finance, for government finances, every day, there's something that you have to do, there's deadlines you have to meet. And in this audit, one of the things we discovered that some of those things that we know that I have the documentation, but I'll be like, hey, can you process this? But I have the documentation, but it was never attached to the actual journal entry. So that's for an example. But we were able to provide all the documents upon request for the auditors. But when the auditors are here to examine the books, they want to look at the number that they're testing, but all the supporting backup documents that come with it. And not just ask the client, and then we produce it, right? So I think that was an issue that was identified. The other issue that was identified was basically, as you may be aware, that the city has affordable housing units, you know, like basically properties they bought using, you know, affordable housing funds. And then each year, you have to value those properties to see what they are worth. And we, as an agency, you know, the valuation is done at a certain time, you know. And this year, the audit was delayed a little bit. So when the auditors ran that, the same sort of analysis, the numbers changed, right? So we, when we validate, we actually provided the support to, and this is for the strainer-hand properties. And we actually provided the support to the auditors that as of this date, the Zillow had this, you know, this estimate, and we adjusted the balance to that estimate. But when the auditors looked at that, they looked at Zillow, probably other, you know, search engines to see what was the value, and then they discovered there was a material difference. And actually, it's in the favor of the agency in terms of the adjustment. So we actually discounted a little bit more. And what it does is just, it's taking the value and then you just adjusting it. It's a market. It's a paper loss. It's not really a loss that is, you know, realized unless the property is sold or unless the property comes off the books. So that was another item that was discovered. And then the other, the third item, that major item, is having that consistency at the city to ensure that somebody's, you know, making sure that the books are closed on a monthly basis. And then also, some of the accounting standards are met in a timely manner. So not having a person in that role for many, many months actually creates a problem for agencies like Clayton and many agencies that I can tell you, three agencies I'm working with, I'm so glad we got the audit done here, but the other two agencies were still working on the audit. So part of the, I think for our plan 2023 is with the hiring of the new finance director. And then also just talking to our interim city manager to having that smooth transition will allow us to make some of those improvements in 2023. I cannot assure, you know, guarantee you that all of those will be made, because some of those things are going to be, you know, we will look at it to see, based on the personnel we have, the number of staff we have. We'll just have to manage within those resources. But we'll try to make sure that most of this material ones are addressed. The last item that was identified was actually the agency funds or the Clayton Financing Authority funds. And one of the things was identified was the reconciliation of the deficit cash. So something that was presented, we had the loan payoff that was happening in 2223. So we did not actually ask taxpayers to put, you know, pay property taxes or assessments on those loans, because the funds were, you know, with the trustee. So that reconciliation wasn't done. So I think it was fairly pointed out, but that's something that we reported as it was in the audited financial statements, with the opportunity that we will address that in 2023. That itself has nothing to do, has no bearing on general fund, because that is a standalone entity, basically. So we just are fiduciary agents on those. So hopefully, those answers some of the questions. But I'll be happy to, you know, go in further. But we'll say or end with this, that I believe the hiring of the finance director with the smooth transition of a city manager even, I think it allows us to slowly transition to the finance director and provide the support to the finance director as well. So it doesn't come in and get overwhelmed with a lot of stuff.
Thank you. Was there other questions?
I've got a couple of questions now. So by there being some gaps in meeting deadlines and did we incur any penalties or anything egregious from not filing things on time?
I don't think there were any issues with filing financial statements. I don't know if there was any other.
It's one item to be noted of. I mean, that's a fair question. And with all transparency, we have to file a state controls report by a certain date, which we haven't filed because we were, you know, we got the audit done. But there's no sort of, as I know, there's no penalty that's going to be signed. But there could be a letter from our friends at the state controls office to our interim city manager saying that you need to do that. I received a letter in one of my other agencies. But our goal is that we'll, after council approves this audit report, that will be, one of the things will be done. But as far as everything else, the ROPS, basically the redevelopment agency plan, a lot of these things have been going through the agencies and been submitted in a timely manner. At this point, at the moment now, I'm not aware of anything that is a penalty out there. Most penalties are assessed on your day-to-day operations. Like if you don't make CalPERS payment on time, there's a penalty. If you don't make IRS payments on time, if you do payroll, there's a penalty for that. So those things have been taken care of. It's just the, you know, as being a previous auditor myself, coming in two weeks and just tearing up the books, then you just find the stuff, you know. So that's, those are the things that have been reported. And these are, what I see is really good for us as agency, because it gives us the discipline to ensure that we can address some of this stuff.
Thank you, Nataish. And I just had one other question. There was a couple of different numbers about ARPA, 1.59, 1.4. And maybe you can explain that. And the part B of my question on ARPA is, I think we were waiting this month to get a breakdown, an itemized breakdown of where all the ARPA funding from.
Great question. Thank you so much. I actually have a reconciliation in front of me. So basically, we started, the ARPA funds were put into pandemic reserve fund, if you remember. And it actually was put into, it's reported as general fund account group. So that's why general fund has a huge variance, budget to actual. So in the table, I think it was from our mayor as part of our budget committee and our council member Trupiano to address in the management discussion and analysis to break those funds up. I don't know the page number for the audiences who are listening, but really, we broke this up. So part of a commitment to you, I will say, is that we'll come back to you with a reconciliation of ARPA funds for 2023. But for now, what I know is that we have a fund balance of about $382,000. ARPA funds, the second payment, 1.4 million. And since some actions were taken by council, if you remember, the couple of actions were senior accountant limited term for 135,000, 348. IT support, cybersecurity, 50,000. Records management was 35,000. Organizational assessment, that was 35,000. A ClearGov software that was basically, was previously approved, but it was ARPA funds, 16,500. And if you also remember that general fund, when the budget was approved, it was presented to you as a deficit spending. And the council voted to use about $37,000 in pandemic reserve to offset the general fund deficit. Police vehicle, we actually used to pay from general fund, but that came out of the ARPA, the pandemic reserve fund. Neighborhood Street Maintenance, that's a fund that is basically, doesn't have any money. So part of the funding came for that 2023, 20,403 was from the pandemic reserve fund as well. Total budget actions approved by council at that time was 399,390, almost $400,000. That leaves us with a reserve fund balance of 1.4 million that we, I will say that we'll work with the city manager and present it to you. Hopefully, that answers the hour.
Thank you, Nataish.
Just have one, just wanted to clarify. On the document retention and organization, is that also in relation to what we, when Mayor Wong and I were on the Budget Audit Committee last year? Does that deal at all with the technology improvements? So is that in the works to be fixed, or what do we need to do about this?
So it's the digitization of records and record management.
So technology?
Yeah, technology, yes.
Okay.
And that was one of the criteria, that, yeah.
Okay, and so with the allotment that we did pull out for the June 2223, fiscal year 2223, is there enough, have we put enough funding towards that to fix this issue?
Great question, and I will turn it over to the city clerk, maybe. I don't know if we have started that project, but that's something that we will, hopefully, it's within the budget, you know. But if not, then this is, will be part of our mid-year. I should say that we'll come back to you as part of our mid-year. What we, our plan is that our city manager and myself and our team will go through and then put together and come to the budget committee. And then we'll come to the city council as part of our, you know, process on some of the media adjustments and definitely hear from council as well.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, so was this in relation to the control deficiency for journal entry support? I think that's what this bullet item here, under internal controls, was to reference, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, to clarify, so this was a finding, I believe, where journal entry or journals were selected as part of a sample, and then when pulled to review the documentation, the supporting information was not attached to the journal, it was in a different location. So that's what this one is.
Thank you. That's different than what I was asking.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's different than what I was asking. Okay.
Slightly different.
Slightly different. But once we digitize, it's going to be sort of together, general entries. We started doing that, by the way. So
Okay.
We don't want Bryce to report out to us, you guys again, so.
Okay. Thank you, Bryce. Thank you. And I will open this up.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say the the system is not connecting. I'm so sorry. I was trying to run the detail on the to get the revenues.
We can, we can table it until you are able to find the information. If you send it to the rest of the council, I think that'd be fine.
We'll put it as part of the city manager newsletter.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would open this item up for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make comment, now is your time. Janet, is there anyone online that would like to make a comment?
Mayor Wolf, I do not, I'm so sorry. Mayor Juan, there are no hands raised on this item.
They may, yeah, they're likely unable to hear us.
They cannot hear us. They said it sounds very garbled, is the messages that I'm getting in. It sounds very garbled. And they know they can't see us, but they can't even hear what we're saying.
Well.
Yeah.
You know, these things happen once in a while. We'll roll with it. That's okay.
Mayor Juan, I did want to just clarify. Well, I don't know if anyone can hear me. That's offline. But on the agenda, we do talk about technology permitting, so that encourage people to come in person if they're not able to hear us.
Yeah, we make every effort to make it as accessible as possible. But the Zoom component is a courtesy, just because of these types of things. All right. Well, then I will bring it back to council for discussion. Is there anything else, anything that folks would like to discuss regarding this item?
It's a lot more lighthearted than it was a year ago when we had this conversation. And it's good to hear that. Just want to appreciate the staff to make that made the corrections that were necessary over the past year. And I really appreciate the report as it was presented.
I concur. So with that, I will look for a motion to accept the ACFER. Am I using the correct?
That is the right terminology, by the way. That is it, ACFER. Yes.
The ACFER. I'm changing decades of use of the prior acronym. So it's difficult for me to use the correct acronym. So I would look for a motion to.
So moved.
Thank you. Sorry. I didn't hear you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Janet, if you would call the role.
Councilmember Tripiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. And with that, that item is closed. And I will move on to action item 8B. And this is a resolution adding a police sergeant and reducing one police officer. Chief McKeechin is here to present the report. So the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. Chief McKeechin will be making a presentation on his slash our request to convert one police officer to a sergeant. In the staff report, it states to eliminate a police officer and add a sergeant, but there will be no net change to the overall number of sworn officers. So with that, I'll let Chief McKeechin explain his proposal.
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As the city manager stated, I'm here seeking approval for the conversion of one police officer position to a sergeant position. The goal of that is to provide supervision on all four of our current shifts. Right now, one of the shifts is run with two officers and no supervisor. So it would now be one supervisor and one officer. One of the questions that came up was whether we would be okay with making it a corporal position rather than a sergeant position. And the reason that that is not really reasonable is because generally corporals are, in larger agencies, corporals are more of like an assistant manager to the sergeant's role as the manager. And the corporal helps the sergeant run the shift when there's multiple officers on the squad. In the event the sergeant's not there, the corporal will act as the acting sergeant and is usually compensated as such. So in this situation, we're not large enough to where we have those layers of management. So this corporal would be technically doing the same work as a sergeant, but with a lower rank and less pay. So it doesn't really make sense to do so. If three shifts need to be run by sergeants, then in my opinion, the fourth one does as well. So that's what this would accomplish. It would be an in-house promotion. That was an agreement we made with the Police Officers Association. In order for them to be on board with us doing this, was that we would keep it an in-house promotion and not look to the outside. Current time, we're fully staffed anyway. So looking to the outside wouldn't be an option right now anyway, because that would put us over our lodged number of people. So once this, if this is approved, then we will start the recruitment this week. And once we close the recruitment, we'll interview the candidates that met the qualifications and applied, and then we'll make a selection from there. And the goal is to get them up and running as soon as possible. Any questions?
If approved, you said you're going to redo recruitment.
Yes.
Internal, external?
Internal only.
Internal only?
Yes.
I've got a number of questions and some suggestions. And you and I have talked about this, as has the city manager, interim city manager and I have talked about it. And I've also talked with two former police chiefs. I talked extensively with both Dan Lawrence, who you were a corporal under at one time, and Elise Warren, who just recently completed the the job of the the police chief and went on to El Cerrito. If if the goal is to provide supervision on unsupervised spots right now, which I hear is Saturday and Sunday, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, is that correct?
Right now, it's Friday, Saturday, and Sundays.
It's Friday? Okay, well, there's a vacant, there's a position, or there's some shifts that are not supervised or attended to by a sergeant?
Correct.
Okay. Have you considered adjusting the schedule of the administration sergeant to move that position from Monday through Thursday to maybe Wednesday, Thursday, or oh, to cover the weekend?
Well, doing that would just leave the front half unsupervised. So either way, you have days where there's no sergeant on duty. So you could play semantics and move the days depending on what's going on. But then you're still going to have, one person can't work seven days a week. So you would still have position.
Okay, but you could accomplish the same thing by adjusting that schedule.
With with another sergeant, you mean?
No, without having to make a fourth sergeant.
No, you couldn't do that.
You can do, why not?
Because one, if one sergeant during the day cannot work seven days a week. So no matter what days that sergeant works, there's going to be days that are not supervised by a sergeant.
And you're not in favor promoting to a corporal, which would only require a 2% differential increase as opposed to a 5% if you did it at a full sergeant?
Correct. And like I explained, the reason for that is we're expecting the same level of supervision from that corporal. So it's not really justifiable that they're only making 2.5% more when the other sergeants that are doing the same role are making 5%.
One of the concerns that I get on a regular basis from the community is the lack of traffic enforcement. Speeding, not stopping for a signal, running a stop sign. In fact, one day, the mayor and I were going over to a meeting on Main Street, and this SUV came by at at least 40 miles an hour in a 25 mile an hour zone. And he pointed to me and he said, how fast was that guy going? I said, well, at least 40 miles an hour, based upon my, you know, perception of how fast. Those things are happening more and more on a regular basis, and they don't seem to be attended to. And so I wonder what plan you have to to address that?
That's been one of the, my main focuses since I got here, was I've let all the officers and the sergeants know that I want to see more traffic enforcement. Because being that I worked here for 11 years, that was one of our primary focuses. And that was, you know, one of the first things we did when we went out in the morning was we would hit that commute traffic. In the afternoon, try to hit the commute traffic going the opposite way. And because Clayton Road is kind of a de facto highway, because so many people come Marsh Creek from East County, it's really important that we do maintain traffic enforcement on that road. And as we talked about, we've got some issues that we've got to work out with some speed surveys and things like that. But that has been a focus of mine, and that will continue to be a focus of mine. And I've noticed, and Raina noticed as well, in the last few months, we've seen an uptick in traffic stops and citations. And so we're already starting to to have that effect, and we're going to continue to do so.
Well, one thing you and I and the and Ron Burnell have discussed is the need for an updated speed survey or speed zone survey, whatever. That's a, that's more of a medium to long term fix that has to get done. Because you then issuing citations, unless you have a valid survey, they would get thrown out in the in the traffic court.
Correct.
However, you can still do a traffic stop, advise the the driver, either they were speeding, or they ran a red light, or they didn't stop for the stop sign. You can do that and not give them a citation. You give them a warning.
Yes and no. You can't work speed without a speed survey, even because then you're stopping people knowing you're not intending on citing them because you legally can't do so. But the other parts, you're right. For red lights, stop signs, things like that, you definitely can't.
And I think by increased enforcement of that kind of activity, the word will spread really fast that you guys are stepping up your traffic enforcement.
Correct.
And I think that would be a good sign.
Yes, I agree.
So a longer term process would be to do the speed survey. Another thing that I'd like you also, give me some thoughts on, is the, and this would be sort of a short, medium term fix. What about hiring, to address the speeding and these other traffic issue, what about hiring a retired annuitant that could work two to three days a week, solely dedicated to traffic, and start addressing this until you can get all your plans in place to to fix it? And the question comes up, where are you going to fund it? Well, we haven't had an assistant city manager for five months, sitting in the account, we've never spent $42,000. If you spend half of that, you could pay somebody that's already getting all their benefits, not having to collect PERS and all that. And and they could do that job. And I'm sure there are enough, in fact, we probably have one right here in this town that, who was very notorious for, famous, I should say, for giving traffic tickets. In fact, he gave my wife a ticket one day. And but that's another thing that could address the the term problem of speed, speed, stopping, and other traffic related items. What's your thoughts on that?
I can tell you, I'm always in favor of adding officers, obviously. So when the when the money's found and and things like that are brought up, I'm obviously 100% always on board with that. So I would love to have traffic officers on duty that can dedicate themselves to that.
And on a longer term, I would like to propose the establishment of an ad hoc committee, much like we're doing now for the for the concerts, to assist you and work with you on developing a plan that is not somewhat short term. Because I'm viewing, quite frankly, I'm going to be put my cards in, I believe this fix is a Band-Aid fix to a problem. We need a longer term, two to three year assessment, and some concrete plans on what to do over the next two to three years. I'd like to see that. And I'd like to engage the community, because as a part of that, one of the things that you and I and the and the city manager were discussing, I've discussed with a number of people, the so called parcel tax that was proposed a year or so ago failed. What the public is enamored with is maybe a lesser amount, maybe a $75 to $100 assessment, that could be dedicated solely, it would be a Public Safety Services Committee or Tax, solely for the police department, funding them. And in that would be some growth for this police department. Because personally, and this is just me speaking, I'd like you to see add two more officers out there in the field. And that way, I believe then in my mind, you justify the number of supervisors that you're proposing to have in place. It could also, one of the things that Elise Warren, the former chief, was talking about, was some sort of a position between the sergeant and the chief, don't know what that would be, that could assist you in the day to day operations and relieve the administrative sergeant of some of those duties. But it also would give that person experience at a somewhat command level, and could be competitive downstream for the chief's job. Right now, every time we, I mean, you were, you're a prime example of what we wanted. Somebody that started in this department, became a sergeant, went to another department or two, and then ultimately, you became the chief down in in Dos Paus. You got all the command, you did, and you came back, and you were successful in competing for and getting the job of police chief. We have to, we don't have that position here in the in our, in our police department to do that. So that's another thing I think that this ad hoc committee could be engaged in. And coming up with that two to three year plan that could assist you, and at least then we'd have a better idea what direction the department is headed.
I like all of that.
I have, I'm finished with my laundry list.
May I?
Please.
Just, so I just want to let Vice Mayor Diaz know that we have an organizational assessment, and the council know that we have an organizational assessment that's going to be coming to you, that takes into account some of these things that you've been referring to. We have the goal setting session that we're going to be having as well, that's going to be coming up shortly. And then through the budget process, the city council will have an opportunity to talk about these these desires and how they want to fund them.
No, and that's good. And we've had so much turnover in the front office that we haven't had the luxury of a consistent person in there to assist and work with us to come up with a goal setting. So I I concur with that.
Chief, it's great to see you. And I appreciate your making your ask on behalf of your staff. And what you see is right for Clayton. I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
On the shift that does not currently have a sergeant, when the current officers are on, do they, do they often need to call for a sergeant during that time? Is that, is that a regular, or is it very occasional?
I wouldn't call it regular, but it does happen. And then, you know, hopefully, there's a sergeant that's available to answer the phone, or the chief, that they can get a hold of. Otherwise, they just have to use their best judgment and and try to reach out to someone later and and kind of clarify what they did.
I figured that was, that was the need, and that's the reason for the ask. So thank you. The question is, then it becomes kind of a fiscal question. If you, if the officers on staff on on shift at that time do call a sergeant, do they charge for their time to respond to them? Or how, is it just kind of, they're just being at a goodwill, they're responding to the question?
Pretty much out of goodwill. Everybody wants to see everyone succeed and not make a mistake, or do something that's going to cause, you know, the department shame or liability. So they just do it because it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. That was the primary question I had. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I too had spoken to former chief Warren, interim chief Crines, and then I've also had a couple of conversations with you, as well as Raina and our current interim city manager today. And I kind of understand what Vice Mayor Diaz is saying. And so I have a couple more, I think, direct questions for you.
Okay.
Currently, with the 11 full staff that we have, and I know that we're just shifting the the numbers. So we're going from a chief, we currently have three sergeants and seven officers. We're still going to have a chief, and we're going to move to four sergeants and six officers. With those 11 full time employees, given our current population, do you feel you're adequately staffed with this new change that you're asking us for? Or would it, if we had the money, and there were no budget issues, would you rather have that fourth sergeant and keep it at seven officers, so that we were 12 people total? What's the magic number?
Like I said, I'd never turn away the opportunity to have additional officers.
Sure.
From the time I got here, and way before me, I'm sure, you can probably attest to this, we've always said it would be great to have that 12th officer. It gives you a lot more flexibility scheduling wise. There's shifts now where there's only two people on duty. So if one has an in custody and has to go to the jail, maybe even has to get that person medically cleared before they go to jail. Now, you've got one officer here for hours. Fortunately for us, we have Concord nearby. And as long as they're available, they always come and cover us. But it would be ideal to have three people on at all times. That way, if somebody is tied up, or whatever's going on, there's still two people here to protect the the community. So
Okay.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. So ideally, it'd be nice to have three per shift. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And right now, we have, with this new change, it'll be two? I thought you said a supervisor plus an officer.
On this shift, yeah, that that is two. So some shifts have three, some have two. With the 12th, we would be able to have 3, 6, 9, 12. We would be able to have We would be able to have, well, yes.
Okay.
Yes and no. Because that 12 counts me, so.
True. Yes, that's right. Okay. And then I know that some cities, and I learned this today, I don't know, I didn't tell them before, but some cities actually dedicate an officer per the population. So just an example would be one officer per thousand people. Is that some, and we're about there now. Given all of the new developments that are coming on board and the fact that we just had to certify, not certify, but adopt a housing element, and we know that we have all of these other zoned lots, to me, I think it behooves us to think in the future. And so I'm just saying this to the council, we can talk about this at future meetings because I know we have all the opportunities to do so. I do think that we need to start thinking about that so that we aren't waiting until the last minute to make sure that we have what we need in place. You've got the Olivia, that's 81 units, no telling how many residents would live there. And then I know we have these other smaller developments. And so as the community starts to grow, I think that we might need that 12th or possibly even 13th officer sooner than we think we will, possibly even before next, next fall, fall of 2024. So I do, I would caution us all to think about that. And so I've already told you in person, and I'll say it out front of everybody, bang the table and let us know what you need. I'm in favor of how this is already proposed, but I do have a question for staff. And that is in the resolution, if the, the changes to, well, maybe it's not this one. It's not this one. Remind me to say that on the next agenda item. It's not this. That's all my questions. There is a change, though.
I just have a brief, a brief question. You mentioned citations earlier, so I guess it's not really a question. Would you, do you think that this type of change negatively impacts the ability of the city to issue citations? Or does it, is it neutral?
I would say it definitely would not negatively impact it. It would be either neutral or positive. It just depends on if that sergeant takes it upon themselves to motivate their officer, and we're going to go out there and write tickets today, then it would increase. And I would hope that that would be the case. And whoever gets this selection, I'm going to have that conversation with them. That's my expectation as the traffic enforcement continues to improve. So I think it will have a positive impact on that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, even independent of this new position, I tend to be a big fan of that, so.
As do I.
I would encourage you and the department to, to do that. And now I will open it up.
Wait, don't do that yet. I have two more questions for staff.
All right.
And you can chime in if you need to. If we were to do something along the lines of a community facilities district, would that require us to, which would make it the thousand, one officer per thousand people and change our general plan? Is that something that staff can just propose at a next meeting and do the work for? Or is that something we as a council need to have a full conversation about?
I think Mala, this is you.
Yes, I, we would need direction and I think we would need to agendize that appropriately to come back as opposed to provide that tonight.
I think that might be all of it.
And there are costs associated with that.
Okay.
That could be brought back at a future discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now.
Hi, chief. Well, I am supportive of you in this, but I do have a couple of questions. So one patrol officer or regular officer becomes a sergeant. Is there a downside to the shift, which is now not going to have that other officer?
No, because it will still be the same number of people on that shift.
Okay.
Just one will be a supervisor. So what we kind of can run into now is depending on, because we do sign-ups by seniority, we could wind up with our two newest people on a shift alone with no supervisor. And that's our issue. So with the supervisor in every shift, we're guaranteed that someone with some experience is on that shift, regardless of where the officers choose to sign up. So it, it would not negatively impact it as far as that second person.
And I know we've talked about that, and I think Sergeant Shaw and I have talked about that too. The other thing, two other quick questions. One, I think on our growth, we said in the recent housing element, it could increase the population by about 2,300. So that, I think we did talk about that, how that could justify two additional officers down the road. Did you, or maybe Sergeant Shaw told me that there's one position on the force that's paid for through state funding? Am I remembering that correctly?
It's federal, it's the cops grant.
Federal.
Yes. And so one position, at least since I, I remember one of the first conversations I had with Chief Lawrence after he congratulated me for getting the job, is he let me know I was on a grant position and if it ever went away, so would my position. And I said, whoa, I didn't know that. He said, don't worry, it's been here and in place for a long time and it's not going anywhere.
I think since 2010 or so, right? And so is that another opportunity to, to, if we're talking about maybe really getting to a sweet spot of 12, is, are there federal funding opportunities to increase the force?
To add additional?
Maybe other than a parcel tax, just saying.
We are constantly out there looking for grant money and for positions that can be funded by, you know, either the state or federal. We haven't had any success. I mean, I've only been here for a few months, but I know they've been trying even before I got here and haven't had much success in that. But that's something we're always looking to do. Because if we can find money where it's a zero cost to the city and we can add people, we're always looking to do that.
And have we ever asked any of our local state representatives to assist us with that or?
Not that I'm aware of. I just met with Senator Glazer's assistant a few weeks ago. And she wants to try to set up a meeting where I can meet with the senator. And so that's definitely something that I would like to talk to.
And I just met with him last week. So that's why I was thinking, he's like, here's my cell phone number if you need anything. And I think the other thing that we talked about is there might have been an opportunity, and Vice Mayor Diaz, I think this was your idea originally, of maybe funding through, it's like a tobacco enforcement officer. And is that something we've looked into yet?
Yeah, so in my previous agency, I was able to get that funding and I was able to add an officer for three years that was fully funded by the state. I know they tried to do that here before I got here and it was not successful this last time. I think I was very fortunate when I got it in, in central California, that it was new and it hadn't really, the word hadn't gotten out yet. So it was relatively easy to get that fund. Now, everybody knows about it and it's still kind of a limited amount of money. So it's gotten harder to get it. I know the agency that I left, they got it renewed, but they only got half of what I had asked for. So it comes up, I can't remember what month the application process starts again, but that is something I'm going to try and see what happens. We'll just keep trying and if they keep telling us no, they keep telling us no.
Okay. And my very last question is this will be an internal candidate. And so will you open it up then to those that are not sergeants to say, I mean, or do you have somebody in mind already?
No, we'll open to the, those that meet the qualifications that we set forth. Some may not even be interested in putting in. Not everybody wants to be a supervisor, so we'll see what happens. But I'm confident that we'll get a, a quality candidate.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to, I'd open this up, this item up for a public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that.
Before you do that, I have a follow-up.
Is it a question or could we take care of it through discussion?
It's a, it's a question.
All right, please proceed.
When, when did you say, I may have missed it, is the next time for the opening on the tobacco grant? Is that, because I, because I believe with your leadership and your experience before, you should be able to apply and get it this time. When is that open?
It is this year. I don't remember what month it was that with the cutoff. I want to say it was due by August last year, so I'm guessing it's going to be the same this year. So I keep an eye on that.
Yeah, we'll keep your eye on it.
Yes, I do.
I was strongly urged to do that.
All right. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment, now is your time. And if not, Janet.
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Excellent. Then I will close public comment. Is there any other discussion items that we have on this? And I, I think we're done with our questions.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
My leading for support of this, although I think it's a Band-Aid for a much bigger issue, I want to make sure that at our goal-setting, that we look at a parcel tax to fund strictly the police department. Because when the last tax issue came up, it was only funding a portion of the need at the time. And the request that I got from people, what are you going to do with the other million and a half that you, that you raised? So it would be, I would be narrowly focused. And I know that we can't get it into the system until for the 2024 election. So I understand, that's why I'm saying it's a much longer, longer term. So I want to make sure that that gets considered at the goal-setting and this retired and new tenant. We have got to address the traffic situation in this town. It's becoming intolerable.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion items from council?
No, I'm in favor of it. I think it makes sense to make sure that we have sergeants on or supervisor on every shift. I mean, just seeing what's happening around the country, you see what happens when there isn't one. And so I don't expect anything like that would happen here. But as the chief said, you want to make sure that they're protected and that their organization is. And to me, it makes sense to, to support this. I would keep that position open and keep it a 12th officer now, but that's just me.
Okay.
I appreciate Chief McKitchen coming and giving his first request to the council. And I'm more than in favor of supporting that with that I move adoption of this resolution.
Yeah, I would, I, I would just say that, you know, thank you, chief, for bringing this forward. I know that this is something that you are interested in. It, I, I do, I am always keeping in mind the cost, but I think that the difference is, the amount is marginal at this point for the value that we get. And so, and I'm very glad that you consulted with the POA as well. To the extent that you as chief are in favor and the POA as an organization is in favor, I think that speaks well to the cooperation that the, that the department has. So I, I would, you know, I think that's, that's great. And I, I do think that there's a lot of work that we still need to do as Vice Mayor Diaz described. But this will at least get us to where we need to be right now and we could look forward to the other things as we go forward. So I think, Peter, I think you made a motion.
Move adoption of the resolution to support the change of staff.
I'll pause second.
Thank you. Janet, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Chupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Cloven?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes, on the Band-Aid fix.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. Thank you. And with that, this item is closed and we will move on to item 8C. This is a introduction of an ordinance adjusting the signature. Who needs signatures on certain documents? I'm not going to read this whole thing, so. City manager, would you please take us away?
Sure. Thank you, mayor and council members. This, this is a pretty simple item. Currently, the vice mayor or the mayor are one of two signatures on all checks for the city. The request is that the mayor and the vice mayor be removed from that responsibility and the responsibility now be with either the city clerk, the city manager, or the police chief. Anything less than $1,000 would require one of those three signatures and anything above that amount would require two. And we have checked with our external auditor who has reviewed this and says that we have adequate separation of duties and internal controls in place in, in our efforts to become more efficient. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
It's just a small question. And that is whether or not the newly designated signers are officials. I think the terminology that's in the document was officials because it had mayor and vice mayor, et cetera, in there. And that's, that's my only question. Now you have to find it. Give me one sec. It is on page, in the document, it's page 232. It's under section two. The paragraph at the very bottom. And it is, the sig, right in the middle, the signatures of any two of the three above-described city officials shall be required for the due execution of such warrants or checks that exceed $1,000. And it's right before, before the rest of the sentence lined out.
We can, we can change that to city employees.
Yes, and maybe just search for it. I think it's in there a couple of times.
Exactly. We can do a, we can do a global check and make sure that it references city employees.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd open this item up for a public comment. If there's any public comment, now is the time.
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay. And with that, I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. The only item that I had on this was, I am not clear on why we are segregating under 1,000 to over 1,000. I would think that just in a normal procedure, when you have a check run, you're going to have all your, your batches together. And you'll print them in order and whatnot. And there will be some that will be over 1,000, some that will be under. I'm not sure if it makes sense to segregate that population because you're going to be doing them all at the same time anyways. So, plus, I do like the idea of two signatures in general. And for our small organization, multiple $900 incidents would still be problematic. Sorry. So my, my suggestion would be that we eliminate the segregation of the 1,000, but that would be the only change that I would have.
I actually agree with you on that, that two signatures and remove that as well, based on my experience. I'm going to throw a little monkey wrench in this. As somebody who both loved and hated to sign checks for the past year, there were multiple times it was just a pain in the tuckus to go down and, and sign checks. But there are also times where I just really appreciated the exercise of signing checks as, as mayor, especially during the time, during the pandemic and the COVID relief. And actually, there, there's an empathic nature of physically signing a check for citizens or vendors. I'm not against having the city manager, the city clerk, and police chief being the primary signers, but I don't think we should take that ability away from the mayor if they desire to be a signatory, not a requirement to sign, but at least a signatory on the checking account. So my suggestion would be just include them as a signatory, but not a required signature. And that's my, just a suggestion.
What does that mean if you're a signatory but not a required signature? Does that mean like you could go down to the bank and like sign stuff?
First of all, we, we just discussed that there were two signatures required and we have.
Well, that's for the checks, though, but.
Yeah. And we, and we have, we have three people listed, city manager, city clerk, and police chief. I'm just suggesting adding the, the mayor as one of those people as well. And if the mayor wanted to.
Like for coverage in case there's absences of two?
Just in coverage in case there's absences. And it, it's not a requirement that the mayor signs, but it's, it's, again, the ability to do so in case there is a need.
That seems cool. That seems fine. I, I, you know, I, I used to sign a lot of checks in various roles. And as technology moved forward, we went to all electronic signatures on all of our documents so that we didn't need to do that. And so the authorization and approval was all systematized. And so when we're signing checks, I always think I am not the one that has the most insight into the details of the transaction when I'm signing. And I'm not sure there was, I don't understand that there's a, it is an exercise that does add certain value. But I, I'm not sure that it, it adds a control function since we, we have all the checks here written prior to them. We approve them all collectively and, you know, all the support is available. So I, I'm, I'm totally open to leaving the signing ability extant, but not necessarily as a requirement. I think that's, that's a worthwhile change.
Thank you. That's, that's my request. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion items that we have?
So where are we ending up? Give me the bottom line here.
Bottom line, because there's a couple of chains on the fly.
Yeah. So I think we are ending up with, we will update the language to make sure it's consistent throughout the document. There's some.
Well, you could keep it now, I guess, if we're going.
Yeah, I guess.
If we're going to.
If we're going to add the mayor back in, you can keep the language and maybe say official and staff or staff and official.
I was just going to say persons and keep it simple.
Sure.
Perfect. And if we're going to add the mayor in, so we don't have to have city official and city employees.
So we, we will have it so that we will remove. So we will have it so that we will remove the requirement that the mayor or vice mayor signs all checks. We will leave the mayor as an available signer. We will require two signatures on every check, and of the two, the requirements are, there's a pool of three employees. It is the city manager, police chief, city clerk, and then the mayor would also be available in the event that two of those three are unable to sign.
My question is more specifically, what level is the cutoff?
No cutoff.
No cutoff, so it's still going to be the same. Because the thing that used to frustrate the hell out of me was when I would go in there to sign the checks, one would be for $13.50 for a sprinkler head, then the next check was $500,000 to repair the street. And I'm going, what's, I don't get the rationale behind this. So I would favor something that eliminates the need to sign those ones for under $100 or some, I don't know what the number is.
Well, without, I think that the challenge is with our systems, we do not have electronic signature capability to stamp on the check. And so we could probably get it. It would just cost a lot of money. And so the value prop isn't necessarily there, and so we can continue to sign checks. There's not that many. And I think if we push it down to staff, who are in the details on the day-to-day operations, we will be removed from that process, and I think that is probably better for staff to not have to rely on us because you want to be able to do your business, you know, as expediently as possible. And so I think this does alleviate some of those things, and so staff is able to operate smoothly. That's really the intent. And this is really, it's not necessarily to lift the burden off, you know, the signers. It's mostly to make it so that city operations and staff is more efficient and so that they can do their work without having to, like, have periods of stoppage, so that they just have to wait. So yes. So with that, I would entertain a motion for this.
Second.
I'd move as amended.
Move as amended, second.
Second. I thought you spoke up and said you moved.
I always--
What, did you grumble?
No, I always ask for the motion.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about Clovin. Did he say move or not?
Yes, he did.
What did he say?
He said that he would make the motion after you seconded it. So we are good. Janet, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Chupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. All right. And with that, this item is closed. Thank you. We will move on to item nine, council items. This is limited to requests for future meetings. Please.
I kind of already alluded to it, but I would like, and I'll talk to our interim city manager about it, but at a future meeting, and it can possibly be after our goal-setting session, but for us to discuss either having a community facilities district, which means that with these new developments that are coming into town, that it's on the developers then to have an assessment that would actually go towards paying for officers, since they're the ones who are adding more to our community. We can talk about it more in detail, I think, at the goal-setting session, so if we can have that possibly as an agenda item, so that we can talk more in detail about that. But it definitely goes into more about figuring out what our right numbers of the officers are and finding the funding for it. In addition to that, given that the ARPA funds did help balance our budget last year, and we know that we're not going to have that going for it all the time, I do want us to think about whether it's in '24 or '26, or even '28, the different types of parcel taxes that we're going to need to have if we have them, and I'll give you an example why. We do have, for the Trails and Landscape Committee, and I'll talk about this in more detail in the next agenda item, but we do have that ending, and we're going to need to go to the voters post haste, like, we're going to have to go to them pretty quickly. And so I do want us to talk about that in future meetings in detail. And that's it.
And I just have a question. Have we determined the date and time of the goal-setting? I know I did the doodle. Yes?
Yes, it is Monday, March something.
Okay.
Mayor, excuse me, we actually are going to be bringing an agenda item for you to approve that date as a group, so.
Okay.
But that's our tentative date.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have any other items under item number nine? Okay. We'll move on to council reports. This is item 10A. Did you want to kick us off?
Certainly. Really appreciated meeting with the Clayton Art and Wine Festival leaders as they were getting ready for the event coming up at the end of April. It's always been a fantastic thing, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what they do again this year. But something that hasn't happened in the past three years is Clayton cleans up, and I stated last year that I'm spearheading that this year. And we're going to do that the weekend before the Art and Wine Festival on April 22nd. We'll be showing up at 9:00 in the morning and having a three-hour pickup, and then a barbecue put on by Republic Services at noon in downtown. Talked to Republic Services, they're fully into supporting this. I've talked to Pioneer, they're fully into advertising this. We'll have T-shirts and pickers and everything else, and we'll have a great community day, and look forward to more details as I solidify those. Thank you.
I just want to ask a question about that because I had that on my list to ask tonight also. Did you mean the 22nd, Earth Day?
Earth Day.
Or the 27th?
Earth Day, the 22nd, isn't it?
I thought you said the 27th.
I think it's the 2nd.
22nd. Yeah, Saturday. Mm-hmm.
If I can get a new T-shirt this year with the updated year, that would be great. I have my old one from 2018. Anyways. Okay. Are there any other items under this? Oh, wait, sorry, my bad. This is the council reports. Wrong one.
I didn't know if we were going to go in order or not. Okay, yes, happy to. First of all, happy Black History Month, everybody. I did have a TLC meeting, which is a Trails and Landscape Committee meeting since we last met, and a couple of items to note from that meeting are that we did form our Strategic Safety and Assessment Plan Committee. They're still trying to figure out what they want to be called, but the gist of that is there will be four of those members from the TLC, there are currently 10 members, who will be coordinating with Larry Thies, who is our city engineer, as well as with our interim city manager, Ron Bernal. And they'll be really trying to figure out what the plan is for how to use the funds, and also prioritizing everything that has to be done around the city, right? So there'll be residents in different neighborhoods that really want a project done in their neighborhood, but this will really be a top-down assessment of what the city looks like as a whole, and figuring out the best use of our funds or the funds in that TLC, in the Trails and Landscape District, Landscape Maintenance District, rather, and then bringing that back to us. They'll be actually bringing counsel some of their suggestions. But a few of the things that they did share during that meeting are Larry has actually reached out to some of the regulatory agencies, specifically the Fish and Wildlife regarding the creek, especially back here behind, in the Cardenay Trail. There's a lot of erosion. I know people that walk back there have been stressing that that big oak tree and where the gabion baskets are that were kind of holding up the creek. We're losing a lot of that path, and so that is definitely on the radar for them to look at. We're trying to find the sources for that because it's probably going to be to the tune of at least maybe half a million dollars to fix it and to shore up that creek. That was one piece. Let's see. Also, for the assessment, the current assessment year ends in '27, so we will have two opportunities to take it to the voters, and this means we're going to have to go back to the voters to extend it, which means they'll continue funding the Landscape Maintenance District. We will possibly need to increase the amount that the homeowners are contributing, but we do need to have a conversation about that because November 2026 is the last election that this can be up for approval by the residents. And waiting until then will leave us no wiggle room, so the goal is to have this subcommittee figure out what the priorities are, and then also make sure that we're educating all the residents on, one, what the needs are for the Landscape Maintenance District, and go to them in '24 because the last chance will be this '26, and at that point, it will sunset, and it will be too late, and we will no longer have it. So that's it on Landscape Maintenance District in the TLC. I also attended the Cal Cities Community Services Policy Meeting. That was statewide. A couple of the important items that came out of that as a committee is we will be focusing on homelessness and behavioral health, and this is statewide again, parks and access to open space, which definitely pertains to us, and early learning, childcare, and youth programs. We do have two schools here in our area. I'm hearing from a lot of parents, excuse me, whose children either need additional services, whether they're pulled out of their classrooms or not, but they're not being screened properly for dyslexia. We have quite a few people in our community that are very passionate about that. I am too, as a former emergency credential teacher. So this is very keen, and I'll get in contact with both of our principals at our schools to let them know that as there's funding coming up for this, that there are things that they can tap into, as well as the actual district that our schools are in. What else? We actually had a Clayton Pride meeting, committee meeting. We will be having that event on June 4th. That's a Sunday this year, so that it doesn't impact the local businesses downtown, which was a huge issue last year. And as more details come to fruition as that date gets closer, but mark your calendars. And then I've already mentioned that I've had several meetings with a lot of our city folks. And I was sad to see Raina go, but Ron, thank you for filling in. And that's it. Thank you.
Well, first, I want to thank the city for sending me to the League of Cal Cities Training in Sacramento for three days. I don't know if you require a report from me, but it was a fascinating three days. I made a lot of great contacts. Shannon was there with me. We, you know, I deliberately tried to meet people from other communities, not hang with the folks that I knew already, and it was really fascinating. I learned a lot, so thank you. I did have a one-on-one with Senator Steve Glazier and his district rep, Alexia, and he wants to know more about what the city of Clayton needs from him. I told him that we do have some emergency needs here. And by the way, on that trail, which I walk almost every day, the cones got washed away this weekend, too. There were actually cones sitting on the top of the trail, and they're gone now with that little bit of rain that we had over the weekend. But he said, keep him posted on our needs, so, and we're going to continue to have meetings. I did attend the East Bay Leadership Council, East Bay Series. Councilmember Clovin was there with me. I am on that board, but again, representing the city of Clayton as well. It was interesting, a dinner with Shannon Watts. Mom's Demand Action was the keynote speaker. Vice Mayor Diaz and I had our first Concerts in the Grove Committee Meeting last week, and we had a small but mighty group of folks. And I really want to thank Howard Geller and Julie Piers for providing us a path forward and all the information that we need. Julie has sent me an enormous amount of documentation to help me with sponsorship this year, and I am doing a community outreach on that, so if anybody wants to be a sponsor, email me, call me, let me know. And again, that concert series will be May 13th to September 16th. And I also attended my first mayor's conference last week in the city of Walnut Creek, and it was very interesting, and I plan on attending more in the future, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Diaz.
Yes. Thank you. Couple things. I have been re-engaged now with the county connection, had the first board meeting on the 19th of January, and then a committee meeting. I'm assigned to the Administration and Marketing Committee on the 1st of September, so getting re-engaged back in that environment, and things are moving along. Had a couple of meetings, as I mentioned earlier, with former police chiefs, Dan Lawrence and Elise Warren, involved in two other activities besides that. I'm going to give a report on the Standing Committee, but involved with the Art and Wine and the barbecue. The barbecue is going to be, the Clayton barbecue is going to happen on the 26th and 27th of August, and the first concert is on May 13th, and the Art and Wine backing up into April, 28, excuse me, 29 and 30 of April. That's going to be a stellar event. We've got a dynamite committee led by Sandy Johnson, and last night, we had the biggest turnout of all of the committee chairs, and we got a new maintenance chair. So that's going to be a stellar event come in April. Back to the Standing Committee of the Concerts in the Grove, I really want to applaud the effort of putting that back in place. It had two goals that I want to share and make sure do not get confused. Number one, it's there to re-establish the oversight responsibility. It is a city event. The money flows through the city, flows out of the city, liability insurance, it covers the concerts. All of those things, including the staffing, are handled by the city. It is not, not a CBCA event. So we needed to re-establish that contact and the communication, and we did. The second thing was a goal, was to dispel all of these rumors that were flying around and reported in the paper that everybody was out to get Howard Geller. That is the furthest thing from the truth. Howard is going to complete this next season, and by the way, he has announced that this will be his last season. He's going to retire after this. He's booked all the bands, he's got everything going. It's going to be a great series. One of the things that we're going to have to face for challenges is making sure that when people come out on Saturday, they do not come out there before 4:00 PM, or if they do, they got to sit with their gear. We may take drastic action. I don't know what that is, but my friend here came up with a great idea. So it's going to be a great season, starting on May 13th, and Howard's all energized and ready to go, and Kim is being real low-key on it, but she's taken over all of the solicitation of the sponsors, and that's moving real fast. And we've got some of the major key sponsors already signed up, and they're moving along. So it's going to be a great concert season, and information will flow from the concert back to the city again, and we'll probably set up a special account--
We did.
--so that we will--
We did already.
Yeah, oh, you did. Okay. So it's done, to make sure we're accounting for the money as it comes in and as it goes out. End of report.
Thank you for that. I can go into detail about how the accounting was working with the concerts, but it's okay. It's water under the bridge now, so that's good. I'm glad to hear that that's been done. I attended, I also attended the mayor's conference alongside of councilmembers Chupiano and Tillman here, and it was great. Senator Glazier was there, he spoke, there was a number of presentations. One thing that did come up was, and we weren't clear at the time because I think some of the information was only conveyed verbally, but there was a mention that with the governor's declaration of emergency due to storms, there was now available certain dollars related to storm repair through FEMA. He announced a website that immediately everyone tried to go to, and it did not work. So whether or not that's accurate, I could not confirm because things kind of moved past that at the time, but I would give that to our city manager and ask to, if that is available, that'd be nice. Prior to the audit being presented here, the Budget and Audit Committee met, and we had a number of detailed questions. It is really good that we do that outside of the scope of this because I think we spent an hour and a half just asking, like, little line item questions with the audit, but it is, I am grateful that we were able to do that smoothly this year. It's glad, it's good to have Bryce back again. He mentioned that he had been here for three years, but it's longer than three years. I think it's like at least six or seven, so I'm not sure if he remembers that far back.
Maybe he means in chambers.
Ah, maybe. And then we also had a, had a meeting with the consultant that we've engaged to negotiate our garbage renewal, just to kind of get some overall direction on things that we can pursue. Our contract, we had postponed the renewal of our contract in the prior year because we needed time to gather information. We're in the process of doing that now, so hopefully that is able to move quickly. There's, it has been expired, and so we want to make sure that we get that in place. And that is the conclusion of my report.
And I just wanted to add one thing that I did meet with Larry Thies, our city engineer, last week, and he said he is following up on that emergency funding as well, just because he-- he knows a lot of that work is-
Yes.
-in his real house. Yeah.
Cross your fingers. All right. And with that, that concludes item 10A. We do not have a closed session tonight, and so I will adjourn the meeting at 8:31. Thank you very much.